We're actually trying to get back.
Can you hear us?
Perfect. Okay, we're recording.
We are recording.
Everyone is here. We can hear each other. It is, I can't even see, six oh eight.
Correct.
Okay, like all this city council work session of September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four to order. Rule call, please.
Council member Edwards.
On sale.
Oh, okay. Council member Hill.
Uh, Romeo said he would be absent.
Okay.
Hi Steve, Brad, are you okay?
Council member Luna Leo.
The chair, there's the chair here.
Council member Best.
Here.
Yeah. I just want to make sure the sound is working there. Okay. Council member Thomas, he likes the.
The type.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Tharp. Mayor Green.
Yes, here, sorry.
Lovely, thank you.
Okay. Um.
Let's move right along. We have approval of the agenda.
A second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Oop, hat tail, thank you. Okay. Um, uh, before we get rolling, I just want to point out, this is actually a very packed agenda for the number of departments that we have. And we really need to keep this meeting to two hours. So I am going to, first of all, I want to thank all of the departments for submitting their accomplishments and their goals. I really would like near the end of the year to have some section of meeting just, just to focus on department accomplishments. So we can, you know, really kind of ride the, uh, ride all the energy straight into our city end of the year party. So I, I thank you for submitting those. Um, what I would prefer, because I'm going to limit you all to ten minutes for presentations and ten minutes for Q and A and discussion. Um, and I will have my timer. Please fo- focus then your comments on your goals, because these goals are going to inform our budgeting sessions when we focus individually on each department's budget. Hey, any question?
No.
All right, then first up.
I have like a holistic question. Um, have these department goals been informed by the strategic planning stuff we've taken?
No, so we have city priorities which we will, and we will set goals differently under that. These are kind of internal goals to each department. And when I was talking to the strategic planner, we identify like, yes, we'll have priorities and kind of larger city goals that different departments will contribute to. Um, but like for us, I didn't do, actually, we didn't do a city council goal thing, but for, as an example, one of the things I want to do is review and adopt new bylaws. Read and, and formalize our adoption of rules of order, you know, that sort of thing. But that, so that's kind of the level of these budget goals or super internal. Okay. Uh, let's begin then, uh, with Judge Floyd in the municipal court. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm gonna apologize in advance. I'm having, actually, due to my allergies, so I don't. Hold, hold. See tonight, so I'm not gonna read one of them. I'm thinking for limited comments that ten minutes before I probably start hacking up a lot. Um, so focusing on the goal, and, and. Initial discussion before we get to the goals. As to, yeah, putting this together, a lot of it is, I hate to say it's a similar song from year to year in terms of recurrent themes and challenges that we have, um, in the court. Uh, and I think my, my best food is that a lot of those can be addressed within the police department as well as um, continuing relationship with the prosecutor and he's also, we knew this year too, so bringing him further up to speed in processes and stuff, as well as being great for that. Ms. Swishman has the court clerk, um, thank her for her, she's incredibly motivated, shows initiative and all the things you can hunt here. So shifting to the goals and such, um, you know, I know these with Ms. Swishman, um, because I, you know, she's the one that's here, that's the majority of us. And so it's not probably surprising, the first thing we must explore is security issues. And it's not just for, when we're convening court, but also I want to make sure that there is security for the building. For not just our staff overall, Ms. Swishman, but for the public that comes in as well. And I, I know it's incredibly difficult to increase security here, um, due to staffing levels as well as other physical constraints for this building, but um, I would like to at least be able to communicate with the police chief about the potential to increase security when, when, um, court is in session. Um, and I think the, the way we can approach that until things get fully stacked up is, you know, we look at the docket in advance and have the opportunity to look at the type of offenses that are charged, if they're simply appearing. If there's, you know, folks that we've had in our presence before, or what suggests it might be certain for aggression, that, um, we communicate with the police departments, have somebody. And they, they don't necessarily need to be. Discuss before that. I don't want police presence to be some of the different. Sort of those that aren't carrying. But, you know, if we pay, or somebody's doing paperwork, we can get them to come up, sit out, all of it. So if there is an issue, it's still incredibly big. Contacted, get them to come upstairs. So that's, uh, that's our first and primary goal. I think the other thing too is we still continue to struggle with language access services. That's a, it's a broken record for y'all. I had mentioned all the time, we don't have dedicated community interpretation for the court. And we don't have access to the state courts, um, language access services. So we have to find our own resources for that. Um, I'm really pleased to put the, you know, county department human services as established in the property network, and I've been communicating with them with desire. They, they indicate they want the services offered to the community as well, and they desire to have some. And. But something that's working. Off that, so I'm hopeful that in relatively near future, we might be able to report back that we did pass a law. Ideally, it'd be great, but just that's why we become teach docket, because one of the concerns I've expressed before is that the, um, the folks, if, if, if for some reason citation gets rejected, they're standard speaking only. We don't know the thing you need to tell the court, and that's going to be difficult, because often we all have the money for it to explain the. Case because of interpreter, and also the, it's a burden to activate, since this takes time after more to appear to court, and then you recapitulate it in a nutshell. So still, that's, that is a high priority, trying to figure out which access services, um, for that. Uh, my third, uh, goal is continuing to improve the communications with the police department and the prosecutor. Um, as I mentioned, you know, issues with the interpreters and such, making sure that we know in advance where you're needed. Um, but also to, um, ask Ms. Swishman to review the citations to one city if there's something to check, so we know if that's need for it. Um, but also is, you know, our prosecutor in this is fully understandable as a combat position. It's, and unfortunately, on the heels of our docket, he often has a docket down the first guy. So, um, he's definitely a prosecutor who tries to have a resolution to the cases before they go to court. So we can do a lot of pay agreements, defer judgments and such. And one of the concerns I have is often to, to, um, consider other aspects often, you know, a lot of our folks who come into court don't have the resources to pay the fines that we're charging. So we want to find some way to, to, to consider some public services as well. And that'll help some of the other operations, whether it be the animal shelter or other agencies that could use menial labor, if you will. Um, but to, to have them be able to do that, you will have to pay a fine, which, hey, just saying, most of them may be unable to pay, and then they create another issue because part of the sentence is being that fine and they do it. And I'm, I'm pretty liberal in terms of the plans to say, I know, I asked them before I put the date in order, I asked them to pay it. We came to pay it because I said it was a success. Uh, but we still have folks who just, they can't do it. So, um, trying to find alternative sentencing, sentencing, uh, bases as well. And then finally, increasing the court clerk's capacity, um, as bright and energetic as she has, Ms. Swishman, has had the human capacity as, as most of us do.
We're, we're still waiting.
Yeah, I don't think.
And, um, I think it's probably, even though it's only allocated ten hours a week for, through the, for, you can't always protect, and then those powers might be available. So, so one of the things I would like to ask is, you know, to, to find ways to help increase your capacity, whether that be by providing some administrative support or both of those positions, that's just the court clerk, that's the city clerk, some administrative support for some of the more, um, basic administrative tasks as well as expanded opportunities. You know, I know that y'all want to pay budget this year, but things are pretty much still flat and not increasing hard in what we budgeted for the year to see how. So I'll try to ensure that she gets the training that she needs to not only understand the basics of what she's been asked to do in court, but also to have the confidence that she is going to eat them all with ours. So, um, that, that's in a nutshell what my goals are for next year. I'm happy to find in certain courses.
Thank you very much, Judge Floyd. Does anyone have any questions for municipal courts?
Goals. I, I guess you got a couple. Um, you, you mentioned in your, uh, earlier part of your letter that you find that municipal code violations are still pretty low.
We, um, I put in my, my memo that to date, we've only gotten twenty-four new cases there. And that's through last month, or, or, yeah, this month, I counted through this month's docket. And, but I don't want y'all to think that's all we have, or indicate, because we do have a docket, a number of, like I'll continue cases, and these are folks that either they'll turn here the first time, are on return hearings, are on return, you know, defaults on their plea agreements, or that type of thing. So, and it's not right, but we had an equal number this year of returning cases. Um, we have not had any actual trials this year, which is unusual, given the sort of cases, sort of, you know, sort of trials. Um, because, and I think a part of that is pleading out some cases. Um, but it does concern me, and I'm hopeful that with the new leadership in the police department, that the, they also feel more confident about writing summons into municipal court, because they're trying to explain that what they, right, if there's an opportunity to write in county court or municipal court, it should take every opportunity to write it into municipal court, because that directly benefits the department, because the thirty dollars from charge that goes into any summons goes directly to the training expenses for the police department. So, you know, I, and, and part of that too, and I don't, I don't manage the prosecutor, that's just a city administration job, so part of that too is perhaps listening to that from the police department as to whether they feel kind of inhibited from writing summons for offenses that they know they are going to, in most circumstances, be applied out to lesser offenses. You know, it's not. Some, but so, um, want to make sure that they're incentivized appropriately, to, to bring the concerns into support. And we get absolutely no code enforcement, um, summons to the court, and then we have enforcement officers listening. And that's to do with, you know, sense of light, which is, have stuff that's still within the jurisdiction.
So it sounds like you had a minimum of conversation to have with the new police chief as he comes on.
And, and we want to. Yeah, it's conversation. Serves, um, or prosecutors that, but to the extent they have concerns about the way the court is handling cases, I would love to have the opportunity to meet them and discuss.
Okay. That's cool.
Do you have any? I had one more question, uh, and it dealt with court security. And I remember talking, oops, several months ago about having a separate space from the court for people that were waiting to come into court and not actions with other people.
Yes.
Waiting to go to court. Were, were we able to solve that?
I don't know. No, in the past, we don't. You know, breaking the news, the, the council chamber downstairs, by the way, most of the doors are shut, that doesn't provide any protection. This room, I know that we be secure for prosecutors, because when the prosecutor is discussing cases with defendants, they have to be outside of the court. I can't even agree to those discussions, so.
So the prosecutor uses this room, though it doesn't leave an extra room for.
And that's. So I'd much prefer than having. Just get, I think, thanks. Down and put that here in a smaller space with those, or you can, they're usually one-on-one. The other thing we do is we can be important to some folks in theater groups, ones that's sports or if they weren't talking class here. We need all that, if they're running, it's one itself, but sometimes it's just, you know, needing a space to help us. Uh, but I don't know.
Maybe we could use the calendar for the council chambers.
Absolutely.
Reported, so we can just reserve it.
For waiting, waiting room, basically.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's our turn.
And we ended up with a, like that, we might be switching, we might be downstairs, and we don't have people coming up into the apartment, you know, we can have it, but it's way up here. But that's.
And I think if we reserved council chambers for your court days, then that would be.
Yeah.
At least, yeah, an option.
That's fine.
Okay, that's cool.
Who is the prosecutor?
Nick Klein, he's with a law firm.
And is that, that's, um, is that a, I don't know that much about that role. That's not an elected role, right?
Say, it's a big complex position.
That.
Sure, this is the first time that I've been with a firm in Denver. This firm handles multiple municipal court dockets, um, in the corridor, you know. And so this prosecutor goes to various different areas.
And then my second question is about language line solutions. Is that something you have to have a reservation for? It's, or can you just phone in in the moment?
Yeah, it's fine. And, you know, it depends on who's available. It's not guaranteed type of thing. Other things, it's, it's.
Five dollars a minute.
Yes.
All the, the average. Being be.
Each arraignment, it, it, doing advisement rights and the service stuff, we probably have it, uh, at least ten. Minimum, that would be, yeah. And that's minimum. If it's a situation where they speak to the prosecutor after their advisement, and they come back with a plea agreement, we need to tackle another at least fifteen minutes for that. And that they, they have to be in with the conversation with prosecutors, so I feel it takes to meet with them.
Okay.
So they can.
And how, I know, I know it's hard to guess, because it seems like the numbers have fluctuated a lot, but how many? I'm trying to get a guess, like an estimated, how much that costs to use that service, if that will, what, just?
Yeah.
Give a year.
If, if that's what we just dedicated it for, um, gosh, even with the small cases we have, in most dockets, we have at least one or two that's, who don't sweep in, which, and so, and you have to have one for each, you know, someone has to be available for each of them. And for efficiency and time, sometimes while the prosecutor's meeting is one, I'll be doing advisement, so I'm wanting that they didn't have two interpreters available at that time. If, if you, or I don't know, if you have any thoughts in terms of the number of folks, but if we have them available during a time period, I can easily see several hundred dollars.
Because you're like, being, like, if, even if you do the minimum of thirty to forty-five, you're looking at one fifty to two hundred as far as, like, per person. And since I've started, we've had, I think, three. So you're already looking at six hundred dollars just for three people, and that's just in the short time that I've been doing the court clerk.
And what does per docket mean?
For, you know, our docket, our, our, it's the court docket. Well, and it depends on what's on the docket. The docket is, is separating different things. We have arrangements on traffic and, and all offenses that go first. And then we have hearings, which might be restitution or, uh, pretrial motions or that kind of stuff. Um, and then if we have any trials that are scheduled, so.
Gotcha.
It, it depends on what offer the docket.
Well, I know there's a lot of factors, but if, if possible, I'd be interested to hear what an estimate would be, because I would just be curious to see what, how that would compare to other.
I, I'll be happy to go back and look at the dockets for this year and provide that information. I'll be honest with you, my hope is, you know, um, basically tightens the issue when it comes to money. And so if I would find a local resource to, because that's, that's someone who's not familiar with our community or our population group and like that. So much rather try to see, and better engage our local resources and pay them, um, for the services. This has always been last. But I will. See if I can do that.
We can pull down case numbers.
We are at twenty minutes, but I have one quick question. So I'm just gonna give myself that time. To piggyback on Cisco's, you have spoken to us in the past about how interpretation for the courts is actually very specialized and different from general interpreters. Is the county's interpreter network that they're establishing, would they, would they qualify?
And so here's the thing, um, one of the benefits being municipal court is there are certain things that we're not subject to, the state courts are, and others don't have to be certified.
Okay.
So as long as they, as long as they have the ability to fully, I would, I would want certified interpretation, and that's what they're talking, they're talking about. Then things I brought to see kind of sort of, but it obviously was, um, C C was trying to start a program that, that I once asked them to start for interpreters. Um, but, you know, to be able to send them for that certification class, we have, we help find that. It's, it's, it's financial work sometimes, but I'm not gonna, it's been counting the grants and stuff that they're proceeding. If, actually, we can do that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, I'd like to move on to police department. Thank you so much.
What? Breyer's online.
Oh, and Breyer. I'll let Breyer go first. Welcome back from vacation, James.
Hey. I'd be up there tonight.
Oh, you're muted. No, we're just kidding. He just can't.
Uh, can you hear me?
Sounds good, son.
Better.
Hold on.
Check.
I can hear you.
Okay. I would be up there, but, uh, I came down with a wicked case of COVID, so.
Stay away. Yeah, stay away.
Um. Yeah, so I kinda didn't see the beginning. I get, uh, am I basically just presenting kind of the goals of the department?
Yeah, so, um, that is exactly what this is about, just the goals. Y'all, and I'm, I'm limiting each department to ten minutes for presentation, and then we'll have ten minutes of, of interrogation.
Great. Uh, yeah, basically between me and Perla, we kind of split the goals between operation and administration. Uh, operationally, uh, the number one, and all these goals are pretty much in line with what a new oncoming chief is going to have to deal with anyways. And it's all with an eye towards, uh, being a real rebuilding year for the agency. So the first goal is that right off the bat, LPD is going to review and reform our policies to better address the needs of the department and the community. Um, we use pretty standard boilerplate, uh, policy provided from Lexipol. We just need to do a fair amount of tweaking. Um. That's, uh, a big project, because we, because we're a law enforcement agency, have a lot of policies and procedures that need to be looked at and reviewed. Uh, realistically, we should be able to achieve this goal by the end of the first quarter of twenty-five. Um. Our second goal is LPD will identify core training needs necessary for day-to-day operations and state compliance. Prioritize them and choose staff to obtain instructor certifications in those areas. Um, this is pretty standard for most agencies. We need to be able to provide in-house instruction in the basic skills that are required by the state for our officers to meet minimum standards of training. Um, stuff like firearms training, arrest control, law enforcement driving. Uh, we have people in-house with some of those, but not all. So the, one of the priorities is to identify what, where we're weak in those trainings, identify personnel that would be a good fit for them, and get them to the appropriate, uh, the appropriate training certification classes. We should be able to get all of these easily taken care of, I think, by the end of twenty-five. Um. Third goal is develop a functional community service officer program. Or, uh, we must identify the functions and responsibilities of the CSOs. Once their roles fully defined, we'll ensure the CSOs will be given the training necessary to do their jobs. Ultimately, we've inherited a program that was never fully codified, and we've been playing catch-up for far too long. We need to make this a priority to define the roles and responsibilities of the CSOs, give them the training, and get them out there to do their job. Um, and the last, uh, the last goal is, uh, kind of in conjunction with everything else, there's certain minimum state requirements for cybersecurity, physical security, et cetera. We need to focus on getting those all up to par. We've got, uh, certain information tech, uh, audits going on that the state puts out, and we just have to meet all these benchmarks to stay, uh, stay compliant. And for ops, that's pretty much what I have.
Um, the goals I have set for administrative staff have been just continue learning our, our roles. Uh, unfortunately, Joanna, when, um, number was trained as to what entailed the duties of the day-to-day task for the police department. So between her and I, we've been trying, we've learned a lot, and we continue to learn that there's new things that we have to be doing or make sure we're in compliance. Uh, so I think that's just something that I feel like we still are constantly learning. Every time we talk to the department, there's something new that we've learned that we have to make sure our department is doing, and we have to do research and learn more about that. Um. And then another thing is, another goal that we have is, uh, making sure that we're getting educated and trained, um, on taking over evidence. Evidence has been kind of on a hold right now due to our, it's not operating right now, and also Joanna and I having to take, uh, training in order to make sure we're processing evidence correctly. Uh, it is something we have to be very cautious about how we're managing that, so we're, and we have to be in compliance with CBI. And, uh, make sure that we are, are doing that correctly, and especially so we're not jeopardizing any cases. We need to make sure that we're, we're being safe with all of that. So that's something we are currently working on, uh, making sure that we can get those cameras so we can start an audit. That's, uh, one of our big goals is we have no idea yet what is in the evidence room. So we want to conduct an audit and work with the DA's office, what they want us to, to keep, and they are kind of relying us to continue keeping, and then kind of work with our policies or the state, um, requirements of how long we have to keep certain evidence. Um, and then our, our last goal is, so we were, a few months ago, we were notified that we were switching from E-Force, um, our system from A-Force to Motorola Flex. Uh, Joanna and I have been attending, uh, training, so we are continuing to do those training, making sure the officers are up to date. They do have to be in compliance, um, as well with the state to make sure that, um, everything's like, it's just a security thing. So we, we have been setting that up with Motorola Flex and the sheriff's department and dispatch. So we're just gonna continue to make sure, make sure we understand the new program, that it's installed properly, working with IT, and then making sure that we are just kind of in communication and getting everyone to feel comfortable using that new system, and uh, I think that's just, uh, we are supposed to go live by November, so it's, it's, it ha- it's happening quickly. And that's it.
Wow. Well, kudos to the police department for their, their time efficiency. Uh, let's do any questions for either Chief Breyer or Perla.
I, I just wanted to add, I did add one additional goal, and I think we're pretty close to accomplishing it, is of course getting the police department staffed up, and that is, uh, with officers, that's a priority, and we're, we're closer than we thought we'd be by this time of year. And that is uh with officers, that's a priority and we're, we're closer than we thought we'd be by this time of year, but. Allowing the chief to uh build his own department, but also come into a department that actually can, can be functional. So. Uh, in order to be fully staffed to do ten-hour shifts, I think the calculation is eight officers. And we are, are close to that. So uh we have two candidates who need to go through post, but we're inching our way there.
So we have budgeted this year.
Seven? Is that right? Lori, do we have seven budgeted this year?
Well, that's. Yes, I think that's correct. I think we didn't anticipate we would be fully staffed by the end of this year. I think. We budgeted chief. Uh, one sergeant, two CSOs and seven officers and then the admin staff.
So all the positions already exist within the budget. We just need to fill them.
Right, and, and you know, when we look at the budget for. Uh, twenty twenty-five, if you remember, that was one of interim chief uh Ken Chavez's recommendations is to have officers on. Ten-hour shifts rather than twelve-hour shifts. And I think that's just a generally accepted good practice. We just haven't had the. The staffing to be able to do that.
Other questions?
Um, the shift to uh Motorola Flex, was that? Um. A choice that our department made or is it like a change that came from somewhere else?
The change came from somewhere else, I believe. I don't think we had to say it was more, I don't know if it was sheriff's officers, dispatch.
It's, it's the, it's the county. I'm on the E nine-one-one board. Uh, the county decided to move towards this new system. We didn't really have a choice but to go along because we weren't gonna spin up our own dispatch center. So this is something that was budgeted for. Um. But yeah, we ultimately don't have a say. We're, we're one vote out of a whole bunch of county agencies.
E-force and now Motorola Flex, the system by which dispatch. Makes calls and, I mean, what's, where, what is that actually for?
So they do pull the case numbers from there. Um, again, that's, yeah, that's like their CAD system and that system. So okay, we all communicate.
Thank you. Uh, other questions?
Ultimately, this is definitely going to be a rebuilding year, so. All of the department's priorities need to be focused on basically covering, covering the basics. Um. You know, some officers that have been here a long time might, that, that means they might not to get to go, get to go to some specialty training they want. But we really need to focus on. Just doing the basics right um and not getting ahead of ourselves. So all of our goals. Both operational ed administrative are, are kind of written with that in mind.
And, and I think also taking some of the feedback from the uh all the panels and the recruiting process for our police chief. That looking at policies, especially use of force policies, um and I know Acting Chief Briar has. Come through all of our part policies very carefully, but looking at that is very important. So I've already talked to um incoming Chief Treoka about. You know, taking a look at that and also just that it is absolutely rebuilding.
Okay. Last minute questions before we move on. Thank you, Chief Briar. Thank you, Pearl. Let's move on to finance department. Lori, I think you're covering for our second finance manager.
Yeah, it's, it seems like we're uh, we're, we're kind of being hit. Uh, yes, our finance director. Went on vacation and unfortunately came back and is under the weather. So. Uh, with all these departments, the way the process worked is that each department met with me and we went over these goals. So I'm pretty familiar with each department and we, we made sure they aligned with each other. So uh, uh, you'll see a lot of these goals tie into each other. Some of the departments tie into each other. I think you heard me talk about the number one goal for the finance department the other day. When we were talking about burnout and staffing issues. The number one goal for the finance department is to essentially get our finance director to be a finance director. Instead of having to do the day-to-day tasks, payroll, accounts payable. Now Brianna Ortiz, our administrative assistant, is getting trained up, but. Uh, again, Ms. Hewlett spends way too much of her time on very uh, uh specific accounting tasks. That are not necessarily managing the big financial picture of the city. So. We propose adding one FTE. To the finance department. And as you can see, she's included some information here about. Many municipalities and the general level of staffing that a, a finance department should have. And by the one staffer person per twenty-five employees, it, it's ballpark, but. We should be staffed approximately three FTEs uh in finance. And right now we have Crystal. And uh a portion of uh Ms. Ortiz's time. So as you can see, part of that reason is that we have had, you know, increased revenues, increased um financial tracking and, and additional things that. Uh, finance is expected to do. The flip side of asking for more staff is we're also trying to become more efficient. So you can see. In, as part of this goal is to increase efficiency, which Ms. Hewlett has been absolutely fantastic at so far. Looking at ways to make things more efficient instead of manually entering data, having data pulled and populated from other. Uh, software programs and have them be able to talk to each other because before we were handwriting, manually entering, sometimes. Double and triple manually entering information. So looking at things to make the uh process more efficient, sometimes it requires additional software. So. Uh, for example, you know, when we have people pay uh. Pay online, you know, having that software be able to talk to our finance uh system, our Casell system. So. De- and developing also standard operating procedures. One of the things that's a weakness about the city is that. We have everything in everyone's head and not necessarily in any policy manual and uh any written procedures. So establishing standard operating procedures and, you know, uh, we have that for the deputy city clerk's office to some extent. Uh, Ms. Hewlett's war is working on that and, and Ms. V Hill is working on that. So. Um. You can see that also includes one of the big priorities is developing long-range financial plans for the city. So a financial investment plan, uh, you know, a, a financial management plan, oftentimes cities have that as a policy that city council approves. So looking at that additional FTE and those additional efficiencies is goal number one. Looking at goal number two ties into goal number one and that looking at software that is able to. Or do the work more efficiently. So we're, we're really taking a hard look at Casell. That is the financial management system we have now that ties into our timekeeping system. It crashes very frequently and is uh very difficult to use on a VPN. So potentially looking at shifting to a different platform. Or looking to improve the Casell platform. If we did that, it would probably mean media, um migrating Casell to a cloud-based system. So we were off the VPN and hopefully crash less. Goal number three is actually a fantastic goal that Ms. Hewlett has to work with departments to familiarize them uh more with their budgets. So that has been happening and is ongoing. Uh, but it, it, it could be even better. To have Ms. Hewlett have the time to meet with each of the departments as the financials come out, to sit down and show them where they are at, at this point in the year. What, how much of the year has elapsed, where they're loo- looking good or where they might want to keep an eye on things. We generally have uh one-on, I have one-on-ones with department heads every two weeks where I talk to them. But having a, a, a budget meeting, I think, would be really helpful to get the department heads to. Uh, understand where money comes from, where things are pulled from and uh how they can better manage their budgets. So. In essence, you're looking at two things. One, some additional FTE and additional efficiencies. With the bottom line goal of getting our finance director to truly be a finance director instead of essentially doing uh accounts payable, accounts receivable and payroll. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions regarding the finance department?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment and I just really appreciate the work that's been done to improve the efficiency of the different processes. Because I think that will ultimately ease transitions as staff members come and go as we have processes set up. And it's more automated than it has been in the past. So I think it's great work in that direction.
I will pass that, those compliments along. This absolutely fantastically uh Ms. Hewlett's work to look and identify the efficiencies. We knew they were there, but she's been the one to find them. And, and even simple stuff like right now, we're finding that when people pay. Online, it's not that, that, that program is not talking to Casell to let us know or even letting departments know that they have a payment. And so having everything talk to each other is much more efficient. And so she's been looking at those. Uh, uh, options and like I, I, I wouldn't. Do her a disservice if I didn't tell you. She's very frustrated with Casell right now. And. The question really becomes, uh, uh, much like Muti Revs, is it salvageable? Can we still use that platform or is it time to move on? And we're gonna try it going to the cloud-based service. We'll, we'll try that and see if that helps the crashing problem, the VPN problem. Uh, but it may just be, it's a, it, it, it isn't the most um smooth program. However, switching your financial and, and timekeeping system is a big. Change. So we will not be doing that before budget season, but could be something we look at in twenty twenty-five.
So what you're saying is that Casell is not really a robust system for our needs?
It, it, it really isn't robust. It is, it is a system that is more clunky than robust.
Other questions regarding finance?
Oh, and just one other, just little shout out. As you know, you know, we were looking at, we were looking at uh, uh. You know, ways to improve things and, you know, as simply doing something like the Colorado Trust. You know, we earned about a thousand two hundred dollars on our interest in previous years. And now we're looking at sixty thousand dollars. So we have, we still have some low-hanging fruit, but it's just jumping on those things that I just like to. I, I'd like to point out, we don't always ask to spend money. We're trying to save money as well.
The charging station.
Yes, yes.
Right? Right? And it was.
To breathe.
And. Miss Hewlett flagged that we were eleven thousand dollars in the red and Ms. Ortiz jumped on up, uh, a system to make us break even. So. Just being, just being smart about our money.
The feeling will still get used.
Yes. Stuck on against pass. Questions, other questions for Ms. Simonson? Okay, great. Um. Let's move on. Um. Are you covering street department as well?
Uh, I can, so. Uh, don't say Medina. Actually, Mr. Medina asked to be later on the agenda because.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah. He had a doctor's appointment in Denver. And.
Let's, I forgot about that. Thank you for the reminder. Let's push streets down and elevate the animal shelter. Caitlin, I see you online.
Hello, I am here. Apologize for the whiteness. All right. So for our shelter goals, um, we have nine of those listed. Let me open my document. So increase operational efficiency at the animal shelter. Um, this is a critical need. As we have outgrown our space, we have turned our side office into a dog room, cat room many times. Our now it's a flex space. Yesterday, we thought we were gonna get four cats surrendered, so we moved all the office stuff out again, set it up for cats. Uh, we only got one cat in today, so I have a office buddy now. Um. Moving on, we have our IGA. So as we all know, the IGA needs to be updated. We want to add a part-time animal control officer to the shelter staffing. So this is not only a critical need in our community. But an additional way to bring in revenue to the animal shelter. Um, currently. In the city and the county codes, um owners can be ticketed. And pay a cost when their animal is brought into the animal shelter. That's typically not happening or only happening when. We have law enforcement who aren't actively on calls. So the hope with having the. Animal control officer is they will work with the animal shelter and law enforcement and they will be able to be ticketing people when we have those repeat offenders or. Um, owners stealing their dogs back without paying. Next, we have increase the number of community members signed up to be fosters. So that's gonna directly improve the quality of life for the animals. And decrease the workload for the staff. Address overcrowding. So again, that will help by having those foster homes when we are full and have a lot of animals. Um, right now, we do have a lot of staff members who also foster, so that can lead to employee burnout. If they're going home and fostering and working at the shelter as well. We always aim to decrease animals' length of stay. That is critical to their overall quality of life. And um they can begin to deteriorate behaviorally medically the longer they're there at the shelter. And of course, support the local animal community. So this has been a goal. On our SMART goals, I think, since twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, since Lori had us start them. So when animals are coming into the shelter, if they are microchipped, then we are able to get them back to their owner a lot quicker. And last but not least, maintain animal shelter personnel safety when the shelter is open. So having. Enough shelter staff so that we can cover. We've also had several employees who are out sick. So um today Brenda was supposed to be in the office. Cat room called out sick, so Brenda was working in the cat room. And that way we're not having to close the shelter like we have had to on the weekends when we have um three staff members and two of them are out sick.
Super important as we get the rest for our season. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Cisco, are there questions regarding the animal shelter?
Guess I'll just say one, people steal their pets.
I'm sorry, I couldn't fully hear that, but.
Yeah, other people steal their pets back. They just go in the office and take their pets back or?
Oh, yes. Unfortunately, um, we did have an owner who ripped the leash out of an employee's hand to load their dog off and drove away without paying. So we're working with law enforcement on getting them ticketed for leaving without paying.
I had a question. Thank you, Caitlin. Um, you said a part-time animal control officer and I was. Thinking and hearing that a full-time was needed, but is that also part of the um. Working out the IGA with the county or can you speak to that?
So it's gonna be both. I know for the sheriff's department, when they ran their numbers, they have enough calls with the county. That it's gonna be a full-time position. Um, the thought here and with animal control, just as they do in Summit County, when the animal control officer is not on animal control calls. They will be filling in at the animal shelter. So moving forward with, you know, Brenda being the animal control officer. When she's not on an active animal control call or case, she would still be office support. So helping with adoptions. In that way, there's no really like sitting around the office. We always have um tasks that can be done.
Thanks.
Other questions?
I, I just have a couple of comments, Caitlin. Uh, I would, I, I appreciate the fact that you're working to get more foster families for the pets. And I wonder if there's an opportunity also to try to develop a more robust volunteer program. You don't have to respond tonight. It's just a thought that I've had about having more volunteers. And I think we're also missing an opportunity by not having a closer relationship with the nonprofit um land pet hood. I think the nonprofit can offer things at the animal shelter camp and vice versa. And that might just be something else that we want to think about for the upcoming year.
Yeah, so for volunteers, um, we're always open to volunteers. We've tried multiple different um ways of getting more volunteers. We've done breast best, sorry, best practices where you have one volunteer orientation a month. And everybody has to attend that. We've are currently, when can you come in? We'll do your orientation. So we are always working to expand our volunteers. Um, but as we see when our community has a lot on their plate, we're gonna have less volunteers at the shelter. Which unfortunately is typically when we need more volunteers. Um, and then for Plan Pet Hood Lead Bill, I agree. I think there's definitely a relationship aspect that needs to be worked on. Um, and probably a MOU for understanding of um what the relationship could look like.
Well, that's an idea I hadn't thought about. So actually enter into an MOU with the nonprofit.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Other questions for the animal shelter?
I didn't, could I offer just a comment from the county?
Of course.
An update too. We um, we had a, it's one of our work items, we finally got around to discussing the revised or updated IGA. So we'll have um something to send over soon. Um, and I just think two, two things just to note, I mean, it would be great, you know, if, I I know the new IGA is not in place. But it would be great if we could have Asian or some, I mean, we get actual budget numbers, some presentation. Sort of as part of the county budget process. Um, so that we have a chance to weigh, or we'll figure out some way, you know, even if the new IGA is not in place, where we have some ability to weigh in.
And so my idea, or at least I think what Jeff and I had talked about, is when department budget requests are actually formulated. Which I think is at the end of the month, that we make that, uh, you know, for, obviously for the shared programs. You know, like through the fire management board, you guys already have access to that. But that we could make that request available to the county. And I, what I would like to do is move the, for our, for our budgeting sessions, like let's start alphabetically. And so we get animal shelter like right up there near the top and um. And uh, you know, and try to coordinate with you guys so we don't overlap on some six hour. Yeah, Commissioner, to piggyback, um, but have you guys sit in and participate in discussion of that budget?
Yeah, I I think that's, that'd be great. And then then just a final comment, you know, to, I mean, but I mean, just looking at some of the presentations, I mean, I think there are a couple of things in here that um. Our attention that didn't seem to fully reflect some views from the county side. I mean, the expansion of the facility was somewhat alarming. Um.
Which facility?
It's just to start our capital campaign, these, yeah, just to begin the capital campaign.
I mean, that's something that's been discussed or at least expressed as a need for some time. It's just never really borne any fruit. So.
Yeah. Costs associated with expanding whole space. I think there was also pretty clear from the sheriff and the that have the control or law enforcement. And now something that reports to civilian animal shelter staff and obviously it's a huge coordination. Um, but again, that.
But you know, I think that just maybe, that may fall into the different way that two different houses run their operations. But I think what really needs to be worked on is is the coordination. So that animal intake, no matter where it's coming from, is is the same and agreed upon. So that, yes, I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, and again, I just sort of wanted to flag for, uh, again, don't wanna hijack, you have a lot on your agenda for tonight, just to begin your budget discussion. So it is hard to, like again, that request to have some company input, that we are working on IGA. And um.
Which?
There were.
IGA.
The revised animal shelter IGA.
Are are you separating out an animal control IGA?
Yes, that was our understanding, that the sort of law enforcement, animal control would be either its own IGA. Or maybe an amendment to the existing county, city law enforcement IGA. Instead of keep animal control in a law enforcement way, animal shelter in an animal shelter lane and figure out how they. Cross train, train and um SOPs.
Yeah, I think we'd like to be at the table when those discussions are happening. I I thought the way we left it when the last meeting was that uh. Commissioner Fiedler was gonna get with the mayor and the two of them were gonna talk about the next steps. So I I understand that that hasn't happened, but.
Yeah, for sure. And like I said, we finally got space on our work set and agenda to begin to give something to hand off to the mayor. So we will, we're working on it.
Okay.
Slap thing before we move on. Um, the departments are gold departments. I don't know how this is, that's gonna be, that'll be after here. Gold, this is the last, it's totally fair. And should please listen to this. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks for staying late, Jeff.
My pleasure.
Since, since we have some, street department has arrived. Street department is in the house. Uh, let's move on to street department goals. I'm limiting everyone to ten minutes for goals. And then we will do ten minutes of discussion and questions. Okay, I trust your summarization process.
Well.
Oh, you know what? We, we can't hear, we can't hear uh Mr. Medina at all. At least I can't.
Is that better?
Yes, much better.
My copy has been dated. Friday, but uh, there are just a few things that we're looking at, trying to find a little bit more property at least. Pretty close to our shop. We're running out of space to find someplace to move our boxes to do some stuff. And build some kind of temporary covering for the winter time to cover some of the equipment that we're gonna have to leave outside. We're gonna wrap up real good. Which leads into the, this is my product. Bob building in city shop. Uh, currently, right now, we're. We're linked with the items that we have in there. Buildings are old, they're built in, I believe in sixty-two is the main building. And we've got so substantial repairs that need to be done, uh, that we just haven't been able to get done because the price keeps increasing. And we keep finding more damage on the roof is what I'm basically talking on both shelves, uh, the shops. So we would like to kick that in there and see if the possibility of that in the future, we know it's not gonna happen immediately. But it's something that we should look forward uh to happening eventually. Um, the next item we. What I'm working on is developing a plan for covert replacement throughout the the city where where needed. We did some covert replacement this hot summer, uh, which has turned out very well with the covers that we picked up last year, uh, next to nothing. Uh, some of that pipe is coming in very handy. It's uh, might be a little bit too big for some areas, but we do have some remnants of uh covers left up at the shop. That we can try and figure out some things, but it's a drainage, a storm drain issue that's gonna be ongoing in like every, it's every street. Something needs to be done almost everywhere. Uh, with uh, that in mind, we're gonna have to start looking at getting a plan on the west side of town. Now that Sideways is finishing up what they're doing, maybe we can start getting some storm drains and some paving done, actually what we needed done. Um, this, that has been a constant issue this uh summer, cause every time I choose the street, seems like either Parkville or Sideways. Inside that they gotta finish some work there and or come back to finish. So that's the other plan will be to uh be more comprehensive on choosing what streets are gonna be doing. Uh, I've already chosen several that hopefully Parkville is done with and Sideways should be done with too. And that will be Capital Hill from Ninth Street to Eleventh Street. Um, Parkville right now is working on Tenth Street finishing up that, or they done that whole intersection. And they're getting paved, everything all the way to uh the top of Capital Hill there. So what what we'll do is finish over the top to the Ninth Street. That one's been needed for a while. Um, there's also uh the intersection between Seventh and James to the mineral belt. It's kind of sloped, it's pretty rough in through there. Uh, when we uh do get a chance to get into that. Uh, my uh greater operator has already got ideas on how he wants to regrade that. So we can possibly take out more of that slope, so it'll be a little flatter instead. Cause now when the cars come up through there and they start getting stuck, they all end up in the ditch to the west. We're gonna try and level that out so people won't have as much trouble coming through there. And I bounced around a little bit on on this here, cause one leads into the other. Uh, we're definitely gonna be doing striping. At the the first part of summer next year. And right now I'm looking into either milling, repaving. And I just want to come in with, tell them I'm now doing resurfacing. I don't know if anybody's seen the uh Casa Blanca restaurant, the parking lot there, Timberline, uh, they resurfaced those. And they, they look really good. And so I'm gonna try and contact them. Um, I had to leave early today too. But I got uh the phone number and I will give them a call tomorrow, see if we can get a quote on that. They also be striking. So we get them started on that. Well, um, let's see. We have to make a decision on how we wanna handle this uh thirty strip behind the western hardware. And one number twenty-five by twenty-five foot in there. We have to decide whether we wanna pave it or approach the Elks and see if they wanna go into paving the whole thing. And we can do it all, all at the same time, maybe all create a side savings to all of us. Whether they're interested, I don't know. The county uses that parking lot right now for employee parking, so I'm not sure what, how they feel about something like that. If we do that, we have to eliminate and stripe it and we'll have to put in eighty-eight parking, which we've already got a plan. Uh, Chicken has been very instrumental in getting that to us. Uh, the plan for striping for behind the table have, uh, we just received those. So now we know what we need to do and how to maximize the parking and design on that, be able to get that done. First of the June, hopefully I'm gonna get started on the paving early next year, maybe even get some paving started. Um, I'll have to check with Martin, our paving guy, who's been doing all of this. And see what he looks like beginning of the summer, cause we can get some of these done before the major events, we'll get a good thing. Um, let's see. We're always, we've got two older uh dump trucks. I don't know if you've seen our little red pickups. We call them our little red trucks. Uh, they're only like ten yard trucks, they might be a little smaller, uh, but they're very old, nineties in fact. And uh, we were gonna look into the idea of possibly auctioning them and using the funds to purchase one. Tannen truck. And if we can find the right one, it it would have to be a hook truck. Then it would be interchangeable with all of our other boxes up there that we have, from our sander to our rock box, to our uh snowboxes that we have up there. We have one extra truck to be able to put another piece of equipment on, so it'll be very interchangeable there. Um, so we just have to uh just look at that and see where our choices will be if we can actually make enough. Off of those trucks to, you know, be a substantial or even a a good start on a down payment or lease or whatever we decide to do. Um, I'd also like to continue with the process on the service truck that we've been working on for the last couple of months. I understand that that's been moving forward and um, we should definitely keep pursuing. And that uh our uh that truck right now, it needs definitely a bigger truck than our two fifty's that we're running on. They, the one, but the possibility of damaging them is a little bit higher. They're all three quarter ton. And one ton, which would be, those buck would be much better. Uh, we are gonna be working on these, one of our uh Tannen dump trucks right now. We got the hitch to work if they were out today and actually using and pulling it around. But that's pretty big, bulky, taking a Tannen dump truck and if they were to size them, you know. Um, they started down on Fifth Street, went lighter is what I understand them gonna do. And then far on, we'll have to start it on different. Move on to that and then all the way down Harrison Avenue, get those, cause they haven't been done in some time. But now that we have the equipment, definitely get it out, cause it's all. That was. Ten of the items that I.
Ten items in nine minutes. Well done. Uh, let's uh move on to questions and comments for Straits.
Tony, do you have any goals or changes around snow removal for the coming winter?
We can talk about that. Uh, we're gonna, uh, since I did recently have um a new hire. I'm gonna have almost a pretty full queue. I'm still one one percent sure of, but I have my. But it's, but uh, we'll be able to uh work better on getting rid of the snow piles. If they moved up to our snow dump that we have up on the town. We're also gonna be using uh utilizing a little bit more our snow blower. But I feel we used it on a couple of streets and it actually worked out pretty good. Uh, the guys liked it, it moved the snow to the side, but it didn't throw any snow in anybody's yard. So it it cleaned up the streets better and we're gonna try and use it a little bit more this year to help cheat those roads wide. Uh, as far as people moving their cars, uh, the only thing we can do is is education. Have more cooperation with uh police department on their CSOs and contacting people to move. Ahead of time and with our newsletter, we'll be able to get out the information on how it will be found. But if we can kick around some ideas about doing one side of the street on one day and then the other side of the street the next day. But there's some problems with that, because if we do this side of the street and it snows that night, then. That, so right now, um, we're being basically reactive, we'll move. Um, we'll get a little bit more planning and a a few, another person, we'll be able to be more profitable, a little more uh snowbanks and. So to the dumps, we're gonna have to educate uh some contractors, but most of the contractors, um, where they can push to the snow. Because they've been making a lot of problems, which whoever they feel like talking. We tried to make certain areas on blocks where it's not gonna block the intersection, but it's gonna be something that's where we can get to. And brown, uh, a lot of the problem is that everybody who has a snow problem is professional. So they decided to put them where they can do it. We gotta try and get more people to understand that it based that with our stuffs.
We, that's when are, did we discuss the idea of mapping the designated snow? Storage area?
Most of them all within the one hundred block on either side of Harrison Avenue, and those are probably our biggest problems. Are already marked as these, then there's signage on it. But the most particles are pretty good. Some of the businesses that push snow into an area and when they see that we got snow there, they just don't push it as far as they could. And so, so the guys will go around when they're in between things at those time, clean it up a little bit. I think that's probably our biggest problem. Uh, on the east and west side, as you get further away from Harrison Avenue, it's. One of those situations where we gotta find and where we can put some snow, then we can leave it there for a couple of days to a week, until we can get to it, depending on the weather. Uh, cause during the winter time, we spend our time plowing, picking up and hauling snow. Those are just usually are only things that that we concentrate on. Well, this, this, you know, I said I'll have more drivers and we'll be able to do more, real quick.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
But you've got one more, it sounds like, too.
Yeah, I think I've got it. That's what I, because of the little reds, and I have two of those. That's what I think is the little reds, and so I have two of those. Got the other trucks there, so when we do operate for the load. Well, thank you, we'll do it.
We had talked last year about maybe contracting out some of the the plowing, but the snow. Set a possibility here, it was just a dead end, cause you could never find anybody.
Well, there's a gave me bids on, they were very expensive. Uh average is about a hundred fifty hour. Uh because they wanna use the long trucks and you don't want them. So it's just an expense, I think my budget for that last year was. For the year. And in years past, I remember I came to a city council meeting one time, when it was. It was major fault for the year and I believe I spent between seventy-eight. Contractor. So yeah, very expensive, pretty fast. Drivers. And that option is still there if we really run into it.
Do we do we still have an open um job announcement?
We just, we just built one now, and he's he's in process of, and. I think when budget comes around, I'll be asking if we can uh if we find somebody, because CDL runs very hard father now. And especially the rubber scrapes and smother.
Well, the person you just hired, you're putting through CDL training, right?
The. He's had lots of two thousand there. Right, you got tons of them, you this coming Friday, so we three weeks in a row that uh. He's having a point, so we're just hoping he can actually get in there and get some, get a CDL and then some. And then we're working on a spot where he's gonna be going to. Bounce up from one low, a little closer, that I'm gonna pursue more and find out if there's a little bit more. A little cheaper and quicker for him to be able to do that.
Sounds good.
And he does have equipment experience in the past too, so and he's. Uh driven some problems up before, so he has he has the right potential and right mindset for it too, and he's walked on locals. He knows the winners, he got everyone's problems.
I have one more comment, and it might be more towards the uh strategic planning that John Trill is helping us do. I love the idea of this paving plan, uh but I think it could benefit us to have something even more comprehensive. Like maybe a one-year plan, a five-year plan, a ten-year plan, and when I was talking to Trill, she said that the town of Fountain, for example. Hired a contractor to help prepare that plan, and I wonder if we could use.
Roads specifically?
Yes, and I wonder if we could use some of our remaining ARPA funds. To look at that, cause I think the original intent of the ARPA was infrastructure. So I mean, I I love the paving plan that you're coming up with, but I think we also could use something a little bit more comprehensive. That I think we would need to hire a consultant to help us with, for sure.
These ones, ones I'm talking about now, will just happen.
Right.
Happy to do.
Yeah.
We can plan out over the next three to five years, that would be perfect for them. With Sideways itself finishing up hopefully the next year or so, um that would be very helpful to be able to choose. We need some can actually get them and not have to worry about unless it's an emergency.
Exactly, and then share the information so that everybody has some expectation of what's gonna happen and when.
I've been very close in touch with uh Josh from sanitation. Brian, our partner. Getting together now this winter so we can start painting more there, back in the projects next year. Sanitation has a. We just found out has a. But say. So. The warmest of them, yeah, it was supposed to start their plan, but they can hopefully. And when it came out, we'd already done it, cause hadn't we known last year, definitely would have waited. Just reach out to get this up.
Yeah, that sounds really good. Thank you. Other questions?
I have I have a question and then I have a comment actually to pay back on that one, so the question is. With your paving plan, does that also include the possibility of E six, if Parkville moves forward with their grand?
Yeah.
Plan.
I was told that they did get their grant, and uh we were supposed to get together, uh. It doesn't sound like they're really planning on starting anything maybe in the next and maybe next summer, maybe the summer after, because those can be.
So that's just sort of waiting and waiting to descend like an anvil to your schedule.
That will work out what. We can help them with and what we can. To complete the whole project, what I have talking game about it, so that we get together and talk more depth.
Um and then my comment is like I'm uh two weeks into. So the grant navigator for our council of governments, the UOCO. Had recommended to me and is and is doing this with me, a. A a raise grant bootcamp for, these are these are US DOT funds for infrastructure projects. They have both planning grants and then larger capital grants, and so after talking with her for quite a while. Um we're working to put together, so this bootcamp is like two months long, um. And we're gonna try to put together a a a planning grant, both for stormwater, a consultant for stormwater. And for roads, um and then we'll just see kind of what are what those comprehensive needs are, um. And so that's my pie in the sky dream.
Excellent, who's gonna write the grant?
Well, I'm hoping that Beth will, um but I'm trying to do my part of it, so, yeah.
Okay, that's great.
So keep your fingers crossed, but it's that that class does not get done until literally the end of October, but the next open period is February. For for the. The the grant applications. Okay, other questions, last minute questions? Thank you, Tony.
Thanks.
All right, um well, we got all out of order here, buyer. Are very patient, Chief Jalen. Okay, I'm starting the ten minute. Here we go.
It's, so it's really hard to, it it's really hard to hear. It it, it's unintelligible, it's it's cutting out.
So funny, the the owl was right next to him.
Yeah, I can't hear it either.
Yeah, it's being really weird, I I some people we can hear great, but others, it it sounds like a bad recording.
Definitely not. Okay, can we turn it off and turn it back on again?
It's all the way up and.
Listen to our owl, where's our owl?
Is it?
Laurie, how's that?
Well, let's have Dan say a few words.
Hello, how are you?
Wow, loud and clear, hundred percent better.
I'm gonna start the ten minute timer over.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not gonna go over the accomplishments, um just for the sake of time this evening, but please take a look at these. Uh we were able to, you know, as goals were set last year, we were able to uh accomplish a lot of these goals. And then a lot of other ones came as opportunities throughout the year, and. I'm pretty proud of this this list for the organization, for the city, for the county, and for our community members, cause. Um that is um pretty spectacular, I probably could have added a few more to that, um. The goal number one, and actually it's really the only goal that I really wanna talk about tonight, and that's the retention of our personnel. I know that it's always the highest expense when a ton, when it becomes to budgetary um discussions. We are at a point right now with our personnel, that if we don't keep them, then I'm gonna lose a lot of. Veterans and people that run the programs that. Um are very, very significant for not only just bringing in revenue, but being able to take care of the community. And the assets that we've already put so much time, energy and effort into. Um I'm gonna be asking for a salary adjustments this year and also um adjustments. To include raises for others, but also um I would like to be able to obviously keep the three people that have been on. The safer grand staffing effort, a- a- adequate fire emergency response for the past three years, all salaries and benefits paid for. Now, I understand that the salaries and benefits that have been paid for for the past three years. While the tax increases have gone up and then the priorities were still there. Um we we did what we needed to do as an organization, I I really feel in order to be able to. Get our staffing levels where they were and but also paid for, and now that grant is ending, and there's no way to be able. Be able to rewrite that grant to be able to keep those three personnel, just to keep us at minimal staffing. So I know that that's gonna be an increase and and I'll look forward to, you know, that creative conversation that we do have during budgetary sessions. To be able to take that big number and and how do we be creative within the operational budget of where we cut? Because we have been able to get grants for PPE and um do other things in these past few years. Of getting a lot of capital replaced and also equipment replaced, so I really feel like we're in a good position. To be able to really look at and fine tune that um get the needle out and and get um the operational budget. Down a little bit, but then it's gonna be that increase that uh both is gonna be split between the city and the county. So that's gonna be my greatest ask this year, is to be able to take care of our greatest asset, which is our personnel that we've put so much time and energy into. So um I look forward to that conversation. And here's some lists of of things that are under that retention and uh of keeping those professional firefighters. To include working on the wildland program, the resident reserve program, the apparatus, the training, et cetera. So talking about programs, I think uh I I think we all know like the value of being able to send out our resources. But I also wanna take some of the fire fund. Uh money that we have created um this last year, which has been the highest um that we have ever done. Pertaining to the revenue that we've brought in, it's been over a half a million dollars now, and then put some of that money back into the program to support. Um being able to still deploy and get that valuable experience out there. So mitigation efforts, of course, we're gonna continue with those, I I think our role in that currently right now is just public outreach. So we're gonna continue with public outreach and do what we can as an organization to get the word out, so that people are interested in that. Apparatus, uh I have an opportunity to maybe hire an EBT later on, I did inform my management board about that. And we'll talk more about that during um budgetary sessions, but um. It would be very, very valuable to be able to have an emergency vehicle technician locally in order to be able to reduce some of these um mechanic uh. Maintenance costs that we're that we're dealing with, health and wellness, I don't think I need to say anything about that, I think that's probably one of the most important things. Uh on this on this list here, uh facilities, uh one of the goals is to try to write a grant for um solar for station two. Uh the electric cost, the utility costs out there, since it is an all-electric station, is um astronomical, in my opinion. So we need to uh work towards, you know, to lower those costs and solar would do that. Uh the age of facility, this thing's still gonna continue to beat us up over here next door until we figure out, um you know, that whole. Emergency complex that everybody wants to go for, right? But we build all the facilities that we need, but we'll just keep chipping away at that, that is a uh a goal of ours. One of the things that we didn't accomplish last year, which are which is our standard operating procedures. We plant, it's just been um, it's just been a heck of a ride, and we just have not been able to complete those, so we hope to uh complete those. We will complete those in twenty twenty-five. We have the apparatus consultant um just analyze the fleet, so we'll have all of that uh coming to us hopefully before. Uh the, I think the twelfth is um my presentation for that. And then we need to update intergovernment agreements between the city and county, which we're currently doing with the hospital. With the college, and also I need to um revamp and get all of our uh mutual aid agreements updated as well. And then uh and then maybe hire a full-time wildland fire specialist. And I don't know if that lies with the county yet, or what does that look like for um the fire department being how having that other um. That personnel um funded to be able to take care of our mitigation efforts here in county. There has been discussion about adding additional engineers as well, because that is the county's request to be able to have. Full-time services out of station two, but I know that with the other ask this year. I'm respectfully asked that we just put a pin in that or maybe discuss that for twenty twenty-six. So. Uh cheap oil does have a few, well, with the training center. Uh we want to um try to get some infrastructure out there, electric, water, and it's really important to be able to continue with that program. With CMC, because and the only way that they can kind of put more funding towards. The training center is if they have some kind of lease agreement with us and that's city property out there, ten acres is. Is um dedicated for the training center, so we'll try to have some kind of lease agreement and that'll come across your plate. Um once we work all those details out at the management board. Um for that greater vision of being able to not only just train here locally, but bring people in eventually from other jurisdictions. Um to. Maybe have some revenue streamed from that, but also being able to take care of people's training needs. And then uh we have to have MOUs, et cetera, with that. And uh I think in a cheap boil, we'd like to be able to continuous, being able to uh do CO detectors, car- carbon dioxide detectors. Out to the public, along with the smoke detector campaign, and then we'll write an AFG grant for twelve thousand for a boiler extinguisher system for fire prevention needs. And then he'll go through some trainings, but uh those should be reimbursable. And then we're gonna have session plan to be able to choose a person within the department to start getting certified and what he's certified in. So that we can possibly um pass the baton on to that person later on when he decides to retire. So other than that, um I don't have anything, I know that was quick, I try to be quick, do my. Just out of curiosity.
Actually, I've got one minute and forty seconds for me.
Wow.
Done, I don't think I've ever.
I hear, I hear mirror lobby in my ear.
Let's uh let's take some minutes and ask some questions.
And I I did add the apparatus list there, so that.
I really appreciate, so I um Chief Jalen had given me this pictures of all of. All of the engines, because I was getting so lost in fire management board, this list is so useful, thank you for including it for.
I didn't realize the first page, though, I didn't actually put their their actual uh identifier. So like engine one and engine three oh one is not on there.
We'll get there, this is still more than, at least my knowledge was previously, and I stopped me from having to look up type six every time.
And this and this is our current fleet right here, this is all the, this is all the apparatus that we do have. Except for a police car, but.
Uh go ahead.
Yeah, um. Really, really, city council honestly, but um. In terms of solar, I would encourage you to reach out to C four's new energy program director. Um Richie. Uh in terms of also for your work, I don't know if NEEP would apply to you. But NEEP is basically lead for nonprofits, I don't know the stat, I'm assuming the fire department is not a nonprofit. But I would be curious to see if that would be a potential, they could potentially help with like. Energy efficiency upgrades as well, uh financially, but um I I'll I'll look a little bit more into that for you.
Yeah, that, so the. I don't know if this is completely related to it, but they have. Uh the state government now, you know, through the feds is offering this thing called direct pay for governments. And governmental or like governmental organizations um to make. Energy efficient or uh or you know, things like solar improvements, um that is a reimbursement. Situation that I will uh. I will try to get you some information on that, so it's it's essentially a, it's a way for us as a government to take. Advantage of the thirty percent tax. credits on renewable energy items that are available to non-governmental, like nonprofits.
All right. I'll look forward to it.
And then there are ways that we can increase that from thirty percent, you know, to something else depending. And I don't know, station two, being where it is, we might be able to, we might be able to increase that just because it is located in, in, in the county and not in the city, which is more financially robust.
Okay. And I, I have talked to, uh, you know, talked to the director, actually it was, I think, the former one, group C four, who is that? Do you remember? Um, because I reached out initially as soon as the county, um, bought or C four acquired the, the solar farm across the way.
Yeah, so.
That was going to be like a year to two-year out project.
Yeah, so that, you probably spoke to Emily, I'm imagining, um, she's still the director of C four. Um, the energy director would probably be a little bit more helpful than Emily already. Okay. He, yeah, he's great. Uh, it, but yeah, I've heard similar things through the infrastructure, uh, thing that was passed through the federal government sometime ago. Um, there's going to be a lot more funding for these types of projects, so there should, certainly should be help for that type of, um, upgrade to that station.
That would be wonderful. And what is his name again?
Uh, Richie.
Richie Moutou, M O U T O U X.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
M O U T O U X.
And he works for C four, C four, he's on C four, but he's on the energy side.
I had this contacted. Other questions for Chief Derry, making question for that point.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, then my last comment is, who give you the size of a flag you desire for patient three or I can order it? I just ordered some for the table.
I, I think it's three by five, but Mary, you don't have to.
Like the city's is five by eight.
Yeah, uh, that's too big. It's three feet by five feet. Yeah, but you don't have to. I don't want to inconvenience you for that.
I did the flag ordering. I did the door maintenance.
Most sorry, but it's.
This one's four by six, you said?
Yeah, five by eight.
Five by eight. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh.
We are, we are scheduled now to have a break. Um, but. Do you want to do a chart?
Yeah.
Do you want to do a H break?
Yeah, was.
There's two questions. So wait, we need, we need Lori and we need Sarah. Alex is here for planning, um, and if we did planning, then Alex could leave and go home to his, their family.
Yeah, I, we should definitely come back to me. I, I'm, I'm here all night.
Okay. Um, so why don't we do planning and then we'll take a break for snacks.
We have snacks.
What behind you?
What?
Seriously, we want cookies. Yeah. As opposed to the fire department where they're concerned about all their employees, we're just living it up.
Right?
Yep. Oh, wait, I got it.
All right, so Chayton is not here, of course, he's out having a little bit of time at the grant handling, and I am not part of his, um, budget setting, but I can go over this and then answering questions. Like I feel confident that I can answer questions about what he's produced here. But again, I did not create this document. So, um, over to start, um, goal one is customer service is to provide quality customer service to the community for, um, subdivision zoning and building related inquiries. Plan of the public hearings processes permitting and inspection. We, I moved around a lot of that. He were partially accomplished. And I just know we've made a lot of them. As far as action items, I'm hired and things are going great. And then evaluate, create, uh, evaluate creation of, and if appropriate, create community development department and planning and building divisions, provide all subdivisions owning and building permitting and inspection services within the community development department, um, uh, it's as complete as it can be for now. Um, we do, uh, see that a city building division is just not feasible at this time. You know, we do the intergovernmental agreement to work with the county. They just take care of all the building permits and I think we do see a day in the future where that can come over to the city, but that's not clear yet. Um, next point, provide all services in a timely, consistent, thorough, accurate and appropriately professional manner. Um, complete with the resources available. I know Chayton did as best as he could, juggling creating ordinances and then triaging, you know, some of the minor stuff and just doing his best to keep the dam at bay. And as I've come on full time, I'm beginning to help more and more and have help like take away that floodwater that has been surrounding him. It is a hard job, but, um, I just noticed logging myself all of the permits and transactions that I've done in September. It's a full-time ready, I spoiled away what I've done in June, July, August. So it's coming around. Um, next bullet point, provide availability and approachability for all customers through an open door and office policy with fully digital and review and virtual meeting alternatives complete. We, we do pre-application meetings in person or hybrid, um, we, we are really hard to accommodate people. I come from a customer service background as well as, you know, my other qualifications for this job. And I, I also take customer service for applicants very highly. I think it's a very serious matter. And I can say that is ongoing well. Um, and we also try and make sure there's, you know, the minimum someone in city hall, but we try also to have, you know, the planning department, someone here through lunches as well. So there's never just like an empty back of the building up here. Um, the, uh, administrative guidelines, including application, uh, processing, this is not complete. Um, we just use, you know, files on our server, uh, we'll be looking at, um, uh, processing potentially platform to expedite permit review rather than just taking everything in on forms and scanning them and keeping them in folders. I go to a planning conference at the beginning of the month and I'll be paying attention to, um, any sort of, um, uh, companies that will be offering that service where we can have like sort of an automated, automated permit system. Uh, housekeeping, um, website updates, application form updates. This is di- digitization of hard copies on office improvements. All these are various stages of partial compete, not complete or, um, uh, complete. Um, but what is, I think the best point on the housekeeping part is that Andrew and I do share an office at the end of the hallway and things are going really smoothly there. And we feel like we have a, a great cohesive, um, department. On goal two, construction compliant, compliance. Um, the goal of this, uh, is to protect the health and safety and welfare of the public and occupants of the new, uh, of new developments through site monitoring, inspection and enforcement of subdivision zoning and permit compliance partially accomplished, um, as far as the action items, um, first one is manage existing and any subdivision improvement agreement, agreements complete. This is all in Chayton's court, so he said this complete is complete. Um, next bullet point, codify, uh, pre-construction meeting, construction management plan and post-construction survey requirement for all new construction related models. This is not complete. It is not in our code, but we're still asking of it at this moment of our applicants, just so that, um, we're engaged in the process and we just sort of know what's going on. We've had no issues with it, but it is not active in our code. Um, the next bullet point, codify construction hours and noise limitations for construction. None of that's been codified yet. Goal three, planning, anticipate future development, create plans that ensure that the development aligns with the envision, um, character and identity of the community. Chayton has partially accomplished. Action items, um, process for me and code updates and the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan is not complete. Process comprehensive subdivision zoning cleanup code amendments complete. We do take notes. We have a file going whenever we run into sort of a glitch or like, wow, this is contradictory or we really need to clear this up. We kind of grab that whenever we can so that at some point it can turn into a proposal. Um, we do have a lot, um, going well. The com- comprehensive plan is underway, which everyone knows about. I think most people know that the natural store landmark district has a survey out, hundred and four surveys are completed by Metcalf. There's more to come, um, research and funding opportunities for local historic, uh, structural rehabilitation. We did have a tax credit workshop, all that, so moving forward. Go forward, support the community, serve various community organizations and agencies which address community-wide interest through the immense development of both in, intra-organizational, intra-organizational relationships. Um, all this has been accomplished on regularly participating meetings. Publicly, basically, Chayton's been attending everything you know we do. Because Mark is complete there, um, and then we move on to, um, some of the statistics. I think if you want to ask me any questions in some of the statistics, I'll leave that on the question portion of this. I don't want to go over my ten minutes, but I'm happy to answer some of that, um, after this, um, review here. Um, we look towards twenty twenty five goals, um, for the community development planning department cheaper. Chayton mentions, um, I need a city engineer. For the development review, capital and silver improvement planning, I think the future public works department director. And I'm not fully up to speed on this. I just know somewhat like the, um, Tony was saying with X, uh, outsourcing the, the, um, expertise, it just runs very expensive. And if someone wanted to tilt towards hiring someone, it could be more, um, uh, money efficient. Um, next point, managing existing new subdivision improvement agreements, um, Chayton mentions continued from twenty four, twenty four. Um, next point, codify a pre-construction meeting, construction engine plan. We just went over that. That's continued from twenty twenty four. So we will be, um, continuing to, um, create a potential code area for those areas that are likely. Uh, goal three for planning, um, repeating here, city engineer. Um, continued from twenty twenty four is going to be the twenty thirteen comprehensive plan, uh, continuing to meet those goals. In addition to, uh, developing the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan, right up until that one is adopted, we'll be working on what has to be done for the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan. And then more code cleanups. This is all still a constant, um, effort from the office whenever we find gaps, we try and we can over it. Goal four, supporting community and, um, same things that Chayton has, uh, accomplished. We, uh, regularly participate as much as we can around present as we can be. And he also mentioned cleaning up the TUP process. Get that smoother. I know there's some areas where like princess are created, some didn't GUP very well and creating, um, new ways that those kind of events can have a better, you know, uh, world to plug into. I think that's all the updates I have. They're based on what Chayton left me, but I'm happy to answer any questions for the rest of my capacity.
Thank you. We get to shape. I'm doing such a dance. You didn't. You're fifty-six seconds to go. Everybody's doing so well this evening. So really proud of you all. Okay, questions for the planning department?
Can we talk about the city engineer a little bit more because we currently have engineering firm under contract, right? What I think I know about that is that they just haven't provided timely responsive responses to our requests for whatever reason. So is it, is it smarter to hire a city engineer to be a public works director? Or is it smarter to continue to contract out with somebody that might be a little bit more the sponsor?
That's a point. I'm not engaged with that very much. That's totally in Chayton's purview, but I, I do think, um, it would be worth even, I don't know what the contracts like with the current engineer, but if we can even just switch the, the engineer contracting, like to get a path to response time, that could be a benefit, like an increase there rather than hiring a full, a person that I, I, it would be my guess that Chayton's, um, being wishful here and like just trying to envision what the department will be in several years from now by putting that in front of your eyes right now, um, my guess and why he put that there.
We, we have contracted with RG and Associates for many years to be our, our city engineers. And my perception is what has happened is, you know, our requests of them ha- have, you know, have been steady and regular and then, and then Chayton came along who really expanded the, the, the ability of the city to start actually providing planning services. And that requires a lot more engineering input. And much like with our city attorney, our RG and associates works for other municipalities as well. So I feel like our requests to them have, have really gone up. I, you know, and I think that's a reflection of, of the, you know, the improved planning situation that, that, uh, at the city. Um, and, you know, they just haven't been able to keep up. So for example, this summer, we asked them to come up with the, the striping layout for the third street parking lot because we need a, uh, ADA parking spot there. And somewhat retroactively during the summer, you know, people started parking very creatively down the middle. And so the question came up like, is there enough room for us to actually strike the middle for parking? So I think that request was made back in July and only recently have we received a response that no, but we can put in the hash marks like you can't park here. Now it's rather late in the year to engage with the, the, with the company that we have been using for surfacing and, and, and striping. So that suddenly that's project has been bumped to next year. So that is one example where I think like if we had an in-house engineer, I don't think, I mean, I, I'm not that kind of engineer, so I don't know, but I, I would think that there would be a shorter time period. Like that seems like a day project for somebody who's dedicated to the city.
Yes.
I would imagine it's also potentially a cost-saving measure if it's a two-in-one role rather than just, um, consulting, uh, if we're eventually going to have to move down that road anyways.
I, I mean, I think that's something that we can ask to, uh, can, you know, have those numbers brought up is like, how much are we paying? I mean, I know I occasion, we occasionally sign checks for them that seem pretty big, but I also know having a, you know, an employee, suddenly we also are doing benefits and, you know, like the everything else, all, all that extra. Um, but.
This is so much expensive that it would outweigh the benefit.
Right. I guess the other thing I would add to the conversation is rather than thinking about this position as aspirational or maybe it would be nice someday is to think about the feedback that we got at the public meeting where we were thinking about what our city priority should be and one of them's definitely maintaining our infrastructure and facilities. So I'm thinking the streets department engineer could go a long way towards helping.
I think we're still looking. Other questions or comments? Okay, let's take a break.
Thanks, guys.
Break. Let's resume at eight oh three. Human resources.
All right, so, uh, Ms. Vehl and I met before she left and we talked about some of the goals for human resources. As you know, the main thing is really standing up a human resources department, so creating one from scratch. But the biggest goal, of course, is employee retention. You've heard that in other departments and other emphasis, but really what we're, it is just such a huge hit to lose someone and then take the time to try and find someone else and then educate and train them and send them to conferences and invest in that person and have that person learn everything only to leave. And so because we compete with our wealthier neighbors, I, I think we need to make sure we're getting our salaries up to as close as we can to market ranges. We all know that we can't compete with our neighbors' salaries, but I think if we pay a decent wage and have a good working environment, we will do, uh, we'll go a long way towards employee retention. So we still are getting, uh, people closer to where they should be for market range. Uh, I think we have heard good things about the retention bonus program, so that's the incentive to stay with us. It's kicks in after a year and then, you know, two. After a year and then, you know, two years and then three years that we've used ARPA money for that program and will. Need to make a decision before the end of this year, do we continue that program or not? Employee mental health is very important, the stress, I think, uh. You know, I, I do feel like we're all on a treadmill and it is very, very exhausting and so having. The wellness program updated, evaluating alternative work schedules, emphasizing flexibility in work schedules. And um, uh, letting people know about our E A P program, the, the, the issue is there's always too much work for everyone and. If you are constantly on that treadmill, i- it, it certainly point you burn out and Sarah Day talked about it when she left the city. And it's continued that once i- is, is um. Mr. Willis said, once he was on board, his plate got full and it is, I think in part because we're doing things. That we should be doing and that maybe the city didn't have the bandwidth to do before. But I think employee retention, uh, you'll see that in the budget requests as well as, is e- extremely important, we, we just can't afford to lose people. Because it costs us so much in time and investment and morale when we lose employees. Uh, under policy, you can see, complete the employee handbook, we're chipping away at it. It's uh, uh, just a fantastic tool, right now, I think our employee handbook's only twelve pages or nineteen pages and. Oftentimes, we don't have policies to address a lot of things, so I think that is a, 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 a good goal to have. So that everybody's on the same page about leave requests, time off, you know, the basics of the employment relationship. So training and development is really something that we had not been doing, I think, prior to my arrival. We hadn't even, I think, done some of the basic trainings that our insurance company requested. So sexual harassment prevention, ADA training, I would love to give our managers and supervisors a lot more. Training on, on leadership skills, supervisory skills. Uh, frankly, uh, we've tossed them all in and they've all been swimming, but I think it's a testament to their character. That they have, I think we could do better with giving them better tools. And again, i- HR sort of focusing on some of the things that. We are hitting on the same themes in finance and many other departments, efficiency in the process is. You know, we have paper personnel files, we have uh workflow and communication that is uh. Uh, a lot of times was on paper and the, like we were saying, certain information could be pre-populated. And in fact, wasn't, if you see on the accomplishments, the first bullet point, uh. I T Dan, Dan Rabinoz helped us with a electronic onboarding process, which has been fantastic. Uh, previously, we'd sent Dan an email and say, can you set up this computer? Oh, and then we have a phone, oh, and. Can you come? Cause there's a printer and so now all that information goes in one document and one, one place. And then Dan will, it gets teed up for Dan to actually take care of those tasks instead of sending him five different emails. And then we can say, what emails does this person get forwarded? Are they inheriting any emails from any prior employee that they need to keep track of? So it's a completely uh turnkey system and so identifying those things that we can make so much more efficient. Instead of uh five steps, make it one step. Document management and reveres is one of the programs that Ms. Vehl is working with. Finance on as just a, a, a better document management program. And so. Uh, efficiencies in the process, I think there's still so much potential for all of our departments to capture that and of course, you see the same thing. Creating standard operating procedures, so um Ms. Vehl started on that project and was trying to write down a number of the. Tasks and things that she does that, we don't have any operating procedures a- at all, other than what someone. Told someone to do years ago and so capturing that so that if we actually. Have to have someone fill in in an emergency or someone's out, we have procedures, written procedures that. Someone could look at and potentially save a lot of time to get the task done. So ongoing H R goals, benefit awareness and education, uh, that's key, we have a four fifty-seven plan, which is a, a retirement plan. And not all the employees participate in it and so educating our employees as to the benefits of that, having our four fifty-seven plan administrator. Come out and do some presentations, so we did that last year and we got a number of people to sign up, i- i- it was, it, you know, essentially. Why wouldn't you? And employees thought, well, I didn't really understand what it was and now that I know, I understand. Why it's worth my time to do it, the same thing about the family program, that has been. A very difficult rollout, I think, for municipalities that opted out of the program. And that are paying the employees' portion of the premium, it has been a very difficult rollout from the state, we get conflicting information. You know, we tell employees to do one thing and then we find out it's something else, so managing that program to make sure employees are taking advantage of it because it's a. Hugely beneficial program, but it's just become kind of complicated, so helping employees uh navigate their own. You know, the benefits that we have, I think, are good, just educating uh employees as to things that they could potentially use. Um. Electronic, uh, oh, I'm sorry, uh, efficient and secure record keeping, we talked about that a little bit about, you know. When Ms. Vehl inherited her position, we were still working on just getting. Documents in people's official personnel files and getting those up to date and that has been a huge undertaking to make sure that all the documentation. Is in the files and that it is up to date. The other issue is compliance, you know, we are audited by our insurance company every year. And that is a huge chunk of time to get uh everything in line, so it's, it's training, it's, it's OSHA, it's a handful of. Uh, preventative measures, it's anything insurance company would want you to do so you won't need to file a claim. And it's good, it's proactive, but it takes a lot of time and I, I think those of you remember Erin, uh, Ms. Lucian briefing everybody. How much time she put into making sure we get a better audit every year because every time we get a better audit, we. Potentially reduce our insurance costs, so it's worth our while to not only protect our employees. Uh, from making claim, but also in the sense that being proactive means that we have reduced an insurance premium costs. Uh, then on accomplishments, you can read those, I think it's just fantastic that the work that um Ms. Vehl did to set up the human resources department. And her predecessor, Ms. Lucian, to get things organized, create processes. Um, I think you can see the fruits of a lot of that labor in the positions we've been able to fill. I, I told Ms. Vehl, I said, I don't know how you did it or what you did, but we were getting such a better pool of applicants for the positions. You know, it, it varied, but we definitely, uh, whatever methods she was using were better than the ones we were using before. Because, you know, streets is now fully staffed, it wouldn't hurt to, you know, overstaff them slightly, uh, I think. Their, their work is very demanding in the winter and they could use another set of helping hands, but uh.
Out of time.
Okay. Minute mark, the first person to go.
All right, um, with that, I will take any questions.
All right, comments or questions for? Human resources.
Uh, yes, just one, um, the family program, it goes to that acronym of it. Um. I remember we opted out of that, you had said for municipalities that opted out, it's been difficult. Um, was there examples of municipalities that opted in? Cause at the time, my understanding was most of. All municipal studies were opting out for whatever reason, but I don't fully remember at this point.
I don't think there were too many municipalities that opted in, we were, I, I don't know the data, but I would suspect that we're one of the few that. Opted out and then paid the entire premium and so the bookkeeping and sort of backend proc. Um, processing on that has been a little more difficult.
That makes sense. Um, and isn't, is there an opportunity to opt back in in the future, I seemingly remember possibly, but I don't. Not fully know the process of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to.
Educate myself, but there is.
I, I, I think you're correct that there was after a period of time, I think you, there was a waiting period, but. I mean, we've been at this for a year, i- i- and it's understandable in the sense that the state was creating a whole new benefits program and it has been a little. I think, uh, difficult on their end for the rollout.
And I think that was one of our reasons for opting out was, we just, there were a bunch of penalties associated with. Reporting your stuff wrong if you opted in, but with new programs, it's like. There's always the devil's in the details, um, and it seemed more risk to opt in. Than to opt out and provide this service to our employees.
So it's only real outcome of that is keeping an eye on that, as a program develops color out of why. And like benefit us more to opt back into it rather than continuing to be opt out but paying the full thing, it's essentially the same thing. Or at least the goal is for it to be the same thing.
Yeah. Uh, any questions or comments? I have a question, have we hired a replacement for Paige?
So I've had, uh, had an interview to candidate today, even though I was on vacation, I wanted to not reschedule that interview. So I interviewed a candidate today and then, uh. The day before had a candidate who I was supposed to interview and there were some crosswires, so I'm gonna have that interview scheduled. For after, uh, I get back, so we have some good candidates, I think. There might be one other interview that I need to do, but we're expediting the process as much as we can.
That's great, thank you for the update. Okay.
Hello, wanna move on to deputy city clerk? Let's do it, cause I figure she wants to end with.
Yeah, that's all, okay.
Good evening, hello, um, so I'm gonna start with my more immediate goals that are things that we really need to implement going forward. Um, and the first few kind of tie in together as far as website. Um, and new operating platforms for certain particular things, um, but first I'll talk about the website, um. As much as I enjoy working on the website and updating things and, you know, combing through things and making sure we're providing accurate information. I am not, I'm not on the background in web development, I'm not a web developer, um, and with today's digital age. There's just a lot that I am not trained on or familiar with and I commonly admit that. Um, but going forward, a lot of the new compliance laws that are coming out and things like that, we really need to be on top of that. Um, just as far as, you know, people's access to the website and what information's out there and maintaining our compliance and information that we put on the website. Our, our website that we have in Civic Plus, they build a compliant site, but they do not maintain compliant sites. It is our responsibility to do that, basically, so it is kind of becoming a full-time job. Just to monitor compliance alone and then go in and fix it, um, and that on top of really building out our new website. It's a lot, um, and so what I would really propose and what I would like to do, especially since we're trying to work with budget here. I'd really like to work with an intern from the high school, since I know that they have those requirements for their senior year. And there's a lot of young people that that's their thing, I mean, they're great with tech, they know a heck of a lot more than I do already, um, so. I would, for this initial year, like to work with an intern and somebody that can just help us monitor this sort of situation. Um, the other part of that is we do have to contract with another company that provides us with this data. As far as what's not compliant, what's being flagged as an issue or where we could get in trouble and so. It's kind of a two-parter, basically, we need to partner with one of the third parties that our website recommends, this acts as like a. It's like a piece of code that's basically layered under the website build that just kind of flags anything as far as like. PDFs that are uploaded correctly or images that are possibly don't have all text on them or things like that, um, but. The big kicker is that a lot of these pieces of software and code don't just auto-fix everything for you. You have to go in and fix what they flagged.
Yeah.
And so that's kind of what I've started to learn is it's gonna create more backlog for us, especially as I'm trying to just get the regular website itself up to speed. As far as what information we want and correct council members and things like that, so. I'm really gonna try and work with the high school and recruit an intern that has a background or interest in social media. Not so sorry, social media, excuse me, but like website development and going forward in that kind of career field as well. Um, and then eventually down the road, I would like to see this maybe come up in budget as a part-time staff member or potentially. Way, way down the road as a full-time staff member, just because. Web development's not going away, tech's not going away, and I just see this becoming a bigger and bigger. Part of what we have to um tackle as far as maintaining our accurate information and that we're not breaking any laws. For that, um, so that's the website deal, that's the intern deal, um. The next thing is, is, is something similar, it's another platform that comes with our website, it's a records request system. Um, there's some particulars when it comes to records requests as far as information that we need, um, and then what I have to keep on record with that request. And so this system basically works with our website, it'd be great for P D to use too, they could basically do the same thing and it would have a separate P D thing. Separate thing for my requests, um, it's called Next Request, it's basically like a fillable form. Um, but everything is incredibly secure, it's HIPAA, CGS compliant, they've worked with those, um. Certifications just to make sure, um, but I would also like to implement this as far as something that I can use and the P D can use. Just so that we have better maintenance of our record requests, um, and it's more secure as far as again with compliance, I'm just bringing it back to compliance. And this is the platform that works again with Civic Plus, our website already, and so it would just be a built-out form and people would go on and put in your records request. And then it would automatically save it, um, like in archive, basically, um. And this is something that I've already looked at, it works with the program that Crystal mentioned in her piece, that records. Um, retention software, so it would all be nicely figured out, working together. Um, and I think it'd be great for the P D, um, I've kind of briefly talked to Pearl about it more just because they get a lot more records requests than I do and they're different types. Um, so this would benefit both of us as far as legality issues go. Um, again, I'd also like to continue working on short charge, work terminal platform, that's something that we just really have to get. Um, under control, so my, my long-term goal is to eventually move full time to Deckard. That looks more like a two to three-year out process, just because I really wanna get, um, our internal structure and system. Smoothed out before we do any major jumping ship and things like that as far as I'm changing the platform. So again, I just really wanna continue to work with Mary Revs, continue to update things that we can with them. Um, sent a Deckard contract over earlier this week, so they're working on that portion as well, but basically just continuing with short terminals. Um, which kind of segues nicely into the next section about licensing process modernization, um. This is more medium-term, long-term, forever-term goal, just because I feel like we're always gonna be modernizing things as we. This thing's changed, laws changed, it's time evolves, our time goes on, um, so for me, it's more just, it's more like streamlining the process. Um, having the website better defined as far as your options, where to go, where to click, what to submit, packets, checklist, things like that. We're just really, um, can't, I hate to say handled, cause that sounds insulting, but more just, you know, it's something simple, I really wanna simplify everything for people. So that it's not a, oh my god, I have to renew my license again this year process box for people. Um, so for me, it's basically just gonna be a lot of updating of forms, um. Synchronizing things, um, editing things in the shared drive, just keeping track of, you know. Making sure there's a better strategy as far as what I'm maintaining on my end, so that people are feeling more comfortable every year when they come to me for. Renewing any kind of license. Um, and then again, I think a lot of departments already talks about more investment in professional development. Um, I too, speaking from the core app side and business licensing side, I too have to reiterate, did need for more like language. Friendly, um. I guess, um, services, I personally use language line and it's kind of challenging, I would say. Okay, at least we have thirty minutes, okay. But so for me, that looks like that's a big one, I'm glad everyone else brought brought that up, um, but it's also talking about, um, in somewhat increasing the budget for trainings. There's a lot of annual trainings out there, especially for the clerk position, that update us frequently on all the laws that are changing and those, I mean, I get. I have four or five major ones already this year from like length of licensing, type of licensing and things like that. So, um, just continuing to be able to go to these sorts of professional development trainings. Um, and also just keeping it fresh, I mean, as far as those of us that are trying to stay here and have a career path and a career trajectory. I feel like, you know, continually updating your knowledge base, continually just, you know, keeping it fresh for you to be excited about your own job, I think that's really important. So I would really like to see that, um, increase as well. The next one is kind of a very long-term goal, I don't wanna scare anyone by bringing it up, but it brings us back to the retention that all the other departments are talking about, like fire. HR and things like that, I would love to explore the idea of a student loan assistance program down the road. Um, that would be a really big benefit, um, just to boost our attention like we're talking about, um, and also just help. The staff move forward as they're trying to build a life with the family and build a house and things like that. So I'm not saying let's do this this year, but I'm more just kind of like outshaping how some things that we wanna. Put in front of you for hopefully ideas to start churning for down the road. Um, and so I have. Feasibility studies, um, from other municipalities that I've actually already looked at, so when it comes time to have those conversations, I'm happy to provide. Documents, research and just some things that are already working for other municipalities, but this is more just, again, something I just want to put on your radar. And then as far as expansion of community engagement initiatives, um, that's a big one, I kind of spoke to in my last department report, workshops. I definitely am going to roll out some annual workshops that are gonna be specific for each type of license, I am trying to get something. On the books this year for short term now. Before we roll into the end of the year.
That was basically it, because Judge Floyd actually. Yeah, great. Uh, questions for? Wow.
I guess one, um, ironically enough, I feel like I brought this up a couple of years ago, uh, when I first ran council, the idea of. Uh, a little less or a little more pointed with student loan assistance, I. Don't think that's far-fetched, but more so the idea from the perspective of helping with. Similar to how we helped PD with academy training, helping with, uh, professional development and potential. Uh, career achieving for certain areas and train people up to be. Um, actually able to do the job in those areas, I think is incredibly important. To the extent of casualties, I don't know, we have. But I do think it's, it's, uh, we can definitely, or I would like to explore that idea a little bit more at the smaller level, which feels like. Having jobs available to people who maybe aren't qualified for it, but seem like great fits for the role as a person. To be able to be trained to be in that position, which I, I, I acknowledge that might not be where we're at right now. But would be like a healthy goal to strive for.
It seems like almost every department or many departments mentioned interpretive services and. Makes me wonder, is there a non-demand that? Any interpreter at the city would be justified, like a full-time position?
Uh, I would be careful with that, um. I think it has to be flushed out with a lot more intent. And I don't know that the city's at that level yet.
Yeah.
I personally would love to be a better Spanish speaker, and that's like personal goal of mine, something that I didn't like to say. Right out of time, but I would seriously, I noticed in my time with the sheriff's office. What little ability I do have to speak Spanish really paid off, and so for me, that's, I personally would just like to. On my own, be better for our citizens as we gain.
You know, and one of the things I know that that they've done at Bill Generation is. Add language training across their staff to try to bring everybody's, um. Functional knowledge up and it's been pretty popular. Not that that's an answer to the interpreter, interpreter question, but, you know. I think in some regards it would help, you know, last time I was at Community Bank, somebody came in and was really. It was painful to watch this gentleman try to ask about his balance, you know, and the. Power tried to figure out what he was trying to like out. Yeah.
Um, yeah, not to say, not what I said is just beginning to shut down that conversation, I think it has to be a more intentional conversation with other partners.
Yeah.
Who would utilize those services.
And maybe that's, you know, since the county has, I don't know very much about the program that they have started, it seems. I don't, I'll just, I'll just. I'll just wait that, try to learn some more.
There's also, and I don't know how it works, if our SO and our PD have looked into it, but law enforcement offers their own additional. Um, for like foreign language speaking certification that you can add on on top of your. Monthly stipend as far as their pay rather, as far as like if you are fluent speaker of another language, so that, I don't know if our. Forces have looked into that, it's just something that you don't have to deal with right now, but.
I mean, do we have, I mean, I know we have Spanish speakers on the staff, like. Do they have the bandwidth to take the, to take the test and do the certification, I'm not sure.
Also, you know, how does this? Any certification for any test as an interpreter is intensely difficult.
Yeah.
Um. And you have to have a more than, uh, traditional understanding of the language of both languages. Um, but in a certified interpreter, uh, to. The community level, not to the any other level, and it, those tests are rigorous.
I think I remember saying too, right, it's very.
So. Well.
Oh, sure, okay.
Is this the thing that the technology is gonna catch up with us at some point, because. You have, um, computers that can now, uh, respond to verbal things, so. Would the bank or the police officer something have a, a modem or whatever you wanna call it, that the person. Both the different language could speak into it, it would translate it out, I mean.
AI translator?
Yeah.
When it exists, it's, it's better than nothing.
In its infancy, in its infancy still?
Uh, and also it's, language is such a.
Yes.
Locationless thing, that it's hard to come up with these over- encompassing tools to it. It helps a lot, like even as the translation services, it's very useful and it does have its place. As a tool to speed up processes, but not to replace.
Yeah, and we got to like, there's still a lot to do figuring out as far as like, how have we been? How does that live in court if I'm using AI?
That's a good point, and I, and just from my own personal experience, like, so some of those, like most recently Google Translate. Someone brings me a question in my other job that they've put through Google Translate. I can usually determine what they're after, but it's really insightful to see where those gaps occur. Um, that things. Entertaining in its way, but you know, as far as communication, it's like, oh god. How are we even making this work?
But, but again, it comes up to cost, because I experienced that with the Google thing, the Google. Whatever options you got there on-line. Unless you buy one and don't use the free one, the buying ones are the high caliber ones, the free ones are less.
That's an interesting point, Steve, thank you. All right, other, other, uh, comments or questions directed at the deputy city clerk? Okay, we are, uh, we're still on track, um, let's move on to administration, which is our final goal setting.
All right, thank you. Uh. Just need a second to get to it. So I am, as I said, so a lot of the goals. In different departments mirror each other and wanna think the things that is the hardest on the city and we've heard this from employees is. Stability, and I think what the people who are telling us that meant is stability in certain departments and stability. In the administration at City Hall in particular, and. You know, I think we've had, uh, turnover, I think. There, the burnout was real when I arrived and the burnout is still real, and so I think we need to look at. Making sure we're taking care of employees the best way we can, so I think that's a two-part, uh. There's two parts to that, first is. You know, pay isn't everything, but it has to be at least a baseline. If you can't pay employees what they could potentially make elsewhere, having less stress and less work. Then they'll leave, and so I think looking at, um, salaries and figuring out if we're on market. And also, you know, retention programs and appreciation events, I wanna thank. Ms. Bushman and Mr. Wilson and Mr. Commons for putting together an employee appreciation event at the end. Of the summer, and I think things like that, so at least employees know their coworkers, they have a chance to relax. I think once we have a good. Base rate of pay and if we have a good working environment, we are well on our way to having a, a good retention. So I think it goes together, I think you can't have all the employee, you know, potlucks in the world if you don't pay well. Um, I think. You, if you just pay and don't care about your employees and don't, don't really. Do anything for them, again, people may leave, I think it's a two, two parts of the equation. Uh, so that would be my suggestions on my goals on employee retention and as one. Uh, as was brought to the mayor and I's attention, it, it ties to stability. So that's the number one goal, number two is to continue to improve the city communication externally and internally. So it used to be the only way anybody heard anything about the city is if it was in the newspaper. Uh, and, or they attended a council meeting. So now we have a newsletter and we've got a better website, so continuing that. Transparency, which I think is really important for people to know and understand what their government is doing for them, I think it's fundamental. So I do think hiring a part-time communications manager, we hired a police chief, fantastic, amazing. I did not have time to do a press release on Friday night, and so come Monday morning. We should have had a press release out or even Friday night about that, so having someone who has the bandwidth to do that. Communication internally, I'd love to have an internet for city employees where they can find the employee handbook, they can. Get their, you know, their, uh, tax forms, they can find out when the paid holidays are. That type of communication is all over the place right now, found in different locations all over, not in one consolidated place. Um, and then there's been discussion about re-establishing the law enforcement community board, and now that we have a chief, I said, please, let's wait until we have a chief. Many of the panelists indicated that asked the candidates how they felt about that. And all of the candidates said that that was something that they would be interested in doing, so I think that would be, go a long way. To creating a better bond with our, our community. So number three, I think is an ongoing, you'll probably see this every year, is continue to improve, uh, the city's customer service. And the list on this is pretty long, we have a lot of things the city does that we need to. Basically, we need to do better, we need to replace the streetlights on Harrison, uh, we need to look at parking, we need to develop an encroachment permit process. We still haven't dealt with the sandwich board signs, uh, we haven't had the bandwidth to do that. We would, I would love to have noise regulations in municipal code, what hours can there be construction, what if there. Is a low-flying helicopter that's really loud. Uh, we've also talked about snow removal in the business district, I'd love to increase the fine for that, I don't think the fine we have has any, gives any incentive right now. And I've always wanted to do this, but we've never had the bandwidth, those news racks that are graffitied and have no news things in them, I want that to get them removed. So if you think about customer service, sometimes people think it's, you know, it's the. Day-to-day interaction, but I think these are the things that we do for our customers, which are the citizens of Leadville. And neither, these are urgent needs to get done that are the things people see, and when they see them not happening, they think their government is not working for them. I think we're working extremely hard, but I also think these are things that would go a long way to showing the community that we really listen to them and care about them. Finally, I wanna really. Take a hard look at the city's financial position, we are in good financial shape right now, you're gonna hear from our auditor, uh, in, I think, the next meeting or so. We are in a very good financial position, but we are also very heavily dependent on sales tax, and we also want to grow the city and the things the city's able to do. For our residents without additional income or revenue streams. That isn't necessarily possible to continue to grow, we're looking for efficiencies, but we'll need to find. Additional revenue without putting any additional burden, uh, on purely our residents, I think that is, uh, something that is not a good idea. So looking at, to see if there's any additional funding mechanisms that are available to us, and whether it's, uh, looking at. Ways that tourists can pay more of their way, or there's ways that we can leverage revenue streams that. Are not as impactful on our citizens, but are gaining money from folks who bring. Maybe some more burden to our community than benefit. So looking at those, and again, like you've heard that in our finance director. Getting her to be able to look at our financial position and bettering our financial position, so, uh. Those are the biggies, they're huge, and they're, they're always, they're constant, uh, but I think we've made some fantastic progress over the last. Two years and, uh, I think if we can aim for a handful of these in twenty twenty-five, we'll be in good shape. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions regarding administration?
You, you brought up. Revenue from tourists. And this is a conversation we had on my first year as city council, but I would want to really revisit. Uh, the idea of parking meters, um, or some sort of. Parking, um, fee, uh, specifically in, you know, heavily parked by tourist areas such as, I mean downtown, honestly. Um. Lots of the arguments were that it's not cost-effective, but. We're doing some initial research, it's just not true whatsoever, um, especially during our summertime, so I feel like that would. Be an appropriate. Like serious look at that as an appropriate measure for, um. Increasing revenues from, uh, taxes, I don't know if that's on the doff or whatsoever, but I would love to see something. A little bit more comprehensive than just ideas from. Any of us who may not be really have any expertise in that.
Yeah, I definitely have been paying attention to other municipalities, the conferences I go to to see what other revenue streams there are, there're. Many Colorado towns are purely dependent on sales tax, but. There have to be some other ideas out there, and I think yours, that, you know, we have that parking study. It, it was finished right before I got here and, you know, parking meters initially creates such a visceral reaction. Uh, but we used to have parking meters and they actually incentivize turnover. At, if you have a meter, it incentivizes turnover of those spots so that people actually can park closer to the businesses. Initially, sometimes you get resistance from businesses because they think that it will deter. Their, you know, revenue, but in fact, it, it turns people over quicker. And brings new people to their businesses faster. So I, I think those are all good, I, I think that's a good idea.
I will look into, I know Idaho Springs, um, has just been, uh, employing parking fees that only. Apply to visitors and not residents, and I'm, I was just talking to their mayor about, they're using that funding stream for a different purpose. But we didn't get into how they differentiate between residents versus residents. They're using that funding stream for a different purpose, but we didn't get into how they differentiate between residents versus visitors. Um but I will find out that information.
That'd be interesting.
Because that I think would be. Part and parcel with especially, uh you know, some of our hundred block side streets where we would have to protect the people who actually live there.
And wouldn't the parking meters force more parking by visitors onto the side streets?
Depends how widely put the. The parking lanes. You know, or if they're using the like park mobile, just parking zones.
Real stuff have really utilized parking spaces.
But when they came out with parking meters, whenever it was in nineteen fifties or sixties. Almost everyone had a standard kind of sized vehicle. Now we have vehicles that you could almost get two of them in a parking space, but then you have people of campers and, you know, so there's. A lot of different sizes of vehicles, and it seems there's a natural. It works out on the street because when the space is open, whoever can fit in there, they fit in there, I mean. But if you standardize the spaces, then you're going to have to paint lines for that space and. I I don't like the idea of parking meters.
Well, I think now some of, I mean, I think your question of where does that push the parking pressure on to is an excellent one. Um I think some of the mobile parking apps alleviate the need for spaces, and they're like on zones that that.
Oh, so the zone, okay.
I've seen them both matched with spaces and also just like, what zone are you in, oh, I don't know, and that. You know, that actually allows people to move within a zone, I think Breckenridge has some zones like that where you can move your car, your parking stays with you. Um if you need to like move up a couple of blocks, because I don't know if I would. Have to drive and park a couple of blocks later, but.
Because you because you purchase so many things at the store down the street, you need to load your car. You need to load your car with all the sales tax money.
Couple of couple halfless City Hall, working people, and it's pouring outside, you're just trying to get lunch.
That's fairly accessibility needs, people might need to.
Yes. So Lori, last year we had talked about potentially hiring at least a part time grant writer, and I see that fell off the list for twenty twenty five. I I continue to.
My idea was to try and combine the grant writing and the communications, I I don't think it's fallen. I I wouldn't be opposed to adding it back in, I just. Think that it's been harder to locate that. Person than I thought.
You still know my secret plans that I I want to come up with a whole bunch of them and steal that. From UACog, because if UACog, her grant position right now is grant funded, but it runs out in February, and there's quite a bit of. Consternation amongst the members of UACog, some who are willing to support and kick up more dues to keep her and others who are not. Even though their communities benefited greatly from her. Yeah.
I don't agree with you Rebecca, that might be a really good investment, sorry.
I think so too, I think we're missing opportunities, and perhaps there's even an avenue to explore partnering with other groups. Grant writer, to find somebody full time, that's like a good job.
That might help some of our requests from nonprofits too. Where it's instead of us funding it, oh hey, there's this grant by the way that exists, let's apply together.
Yes, a great idea too. Because I think that's the flavor of the next generation of grants is it's it's better to stronger together.
Yeah.
You know, if you apply.
I do think everywhere to consider that position, we want to be really in really good communication with all the other. Grant funded organizations and just make sure that. We're not competing for things or, you know, it would add a. Complexity to the landscape.
Yeah, for sure, and I mean, I think we do that like right now, we met with. Labor earlier, labor office earlier this year, just making sure like. Especially for DOLA funding, we definitely don't want to step on each other's toes, and I think those, that communication is.
Yeah.
Is happening, but it's, you know, like, again, that's another meeting for us.
Yeah.
And to the extent it exists, it would imagine just be plug and play with whatever nonprofit executive directors do to communicate those.
To that point, it'd be better to have a dedicated person to do all that than.
Yeah.
And that would really also necessitate uh beefing up finance, because. You you have the unintended consequences that some of the things we do just put more work on finance without any thought as to the backend of it, but. Really, the grant. Management portion, the the accounting side of it falls on finance.
Well, and so here's the thing, though, so you can hire a grant writer. But the way to make them pay for themselves is to make them also the grant manager. If they do that, then they can add their cost of the work on that grant to the grant application. Yeah, but if they're just a grant writer, you can't.
Nifty little nonprofit trick.
And so you could potentially structure a position that you would hope would pay for itself.
And if not, the first year usually would mean the first couple.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that might actually be worth looking into.
Me too, through both reduction in cash math in the city, and then also the benefit of whatever funding we're able to get for whatever project.
Right.
And and I've said it to anybody who will listen, is the the cities that have money to hire a grant writer, grant manager. Cities have money to chase the money, get more money, and then they have more money, and we're. We we are, we're getting left behind because we don't have the. Personnel, so we don't chase the money, so we don't get the money, so we don't have the money, it's just, so you're absolutely right.
Does the management that doesn't shuffle that burden off onto finance. And in doing so, is able to work on funding their own salary. You know, like. That may be the way to become a city. Who maybe has not a lot of money, but who can get money and sustain that position.
And that feels to me like something that'd be worthwhile investment, even if it's an upfront direct cost to the city rather than. Uh through grants, like totally makes sense.
I mean, so literally, I'm just going to give an example, so the person from UOCOG that I've been working with. Who is just the grant writer for or navigator for UOCOG, that was the whole. You know, like there there's a county, so their increased request would be thirteen thousand dollars. She brought in a three hundred thousand dollar grant to build them. Or to improve their library and add a new uh uh like a career advancement facility onto it. Um and they're balking because thirteen thousand dollars is. In addition to their their dues is just too much, and I was just like, oh my god.
Let's hire her.
Yeah, exactly, right. She can start tomorrow.
More job security.
Anyway, okay, well, this has been really great, I want to thank, I want to thank. City administrator for hanging with us, I know your time is so limited, you have so many pressures on you, and I really hope that you actually embrace. This vacation as an actual hundred percent real vacation, not a working vacation.
Yes, well, I am I am not taking my work phone with me.
Yes.
But I will, I have a way to still check email, so if if the world is coming to an end, you can email me.
Be emailing the city administrator, do you have your email forwarded to Ms. Bushman?
Yeah, I forwarded everything, uh if you if you contact me in any. If you contact me in any way other than by a letter, you will get an out of office saying you need to contact Sarah or the mayor. Or uh Bree Ortiz, so. Yep.
Okay, well, have a very safe trip.
Thank you.
Ms. Bushman has your glasses, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you, rest of you so much for coming in and and going over this, I'm. Alternately terrified and optimistic about budget.